You're both full.
Yeah.
I tried to finish, we didn't have time.
We're holding you down, man.
Bye 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 bye.
No, you're in, you're in, you're in.
All right, change, change.
No, no, no.
Oh.
No.
Yeah.
I love, I love.
I would say, come on.
All right, put one under your desk, you're generally what that's about.
Oh, okay.
June 12th, 2025, regular meeting of the Mansfield Board of Ed. I'm Kathy Ward, the board chair, and I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:33. Jill, would you call the roll, please?
Jeanette Picard?
Here.
Martha Kelly?
Here.
Edith Allison?
Here.
Gregory Cecil?
Here.
Susanna Everett?
I'm here.
Sabrina Hosner?
Here.
And Catherine Paulus is joining us online. Maybe not quite yet. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jill. Edith, would you read our mission statement, please?
It is the mission of the Mansfield Public Schools in partnership with the Mansfield community to ensure that each and every child develops the knowledge, skills, and dispositions essential for civic engagement and personal excellence in learning, life, and work within our local and global community.
Great, thank you, Edith. That brings us to approval of minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes of May 8, 2025, regular meeting? Any objections to approving these minutes?
No, it's the best. I think it's the one that talks about the truth. I can't remember which one it's been, I made a suggestion.
Okay.
On the future topic.
And was that included in the minutes?
I'm figuring my time.
Yeah, it's, I can't remember which meeting it was, I thought I had it here. But it's the meeting where we just, where I made a suggestion about, included in our syllabuses for next year, syllabi, that we think about including Connecticut, and it's not Connecticut history, it's Connecticut's role in the 250th founding of our country.
So was that included in the minutes, or was it omitted?
It was included, but included incorrectly.
Incorrectly. Okay, we can amend that. All right. So, hearing no objections on May 8, minutes are approved. Any corrections to the minutes of May 21, 2025, special meeting? Any objections to approving those minutes? Any abstentions? Those minutes are approved. And any corrections to the minutes of June 5, 2025, special meeting? Any objections to approving those minutes? Any abstentions? Minutes are approved. Thank you. So that brings us to our recognition and celebration portion of our meeting, and we're going to start with the Mansfield Board of Education Student Leadership Awards. Great, thank you very much, Jamie. The Mansfield Board of Ed, Board of Education Student Leadership Award is given annually to two students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. Leadership skills include willingness to take on challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concerns for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor a commitment. Today, we have the opportunity to honor two Mansfield Middle School students who are this year's recipients of the award. Farida Obajami and Wheezy Owen. At this time, I would like to introduce Principal Barlow from Mansfield Middle School, who will share some remarks about each of our Mansfield Board of Ed Award winners.
Thank you. This is one of our most enjoyable Board of Ed evenings when we have the opportunity to honor young and old people starting out maybe a potential career in education, wink, wink, students, or those that are retiring. But I'm pleased to take a moment to share some thoughts and remarks upon our Mansfield Middle School students. The eighth grade teachers are honored to recognize Wheezy Owen as one of the 2024-2025 Mansfield Board of Ed Student Leadership Award recipients. He demonstrates exceptional academic performance, consistently exceeding expectations and inspiring peers. When asked about Wheezy's favorite memories of middle school, he responded, "I love PE and band classes, where I was able to be productive and at the same time develop new friendships." During his years at MMS, Wheezy took full advantage of our extracurricular options by participating in jazz band, concert band, junior band, track and field, math counts, writing center, mural club, drum line, and German exchange. He managed all these commitments while staying involved in some outside activities as well, including volunteering at the No Freeze Shelter. He also volunteered frequently at the task force in Willimantic, a volunteer group with a primary focus on preventing child abuse and neglect through community engagement and education. Wheezy stated the following about his years at MMS. "They have taught me many lessons that have shaped me as a person and helped me grow. Some lessons include how to set boundaries, how to work with others effectively, understand likes and dislikes, and how to apply the learned skills in different areas of life." Wheezy's teachers wholeheartedly agree with this self-assessment and see evidence of his maturity and responsibility as he embodies our habits of character of kindness, respect, and responsibility. His teachers are grateful for this example he sets for others. Wheezy can be identified as a student who consistently strives for excellence and actively contributes to building a sense of community within our school. Wheezy always relates, radiates kindness through his positive and compassionate attitude. He demonstrates the importance of considering the needs of others and inspires those around him to do the same. Congratulations, Wheezy. Wheezy, can you join us for a moment? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so let's do a photo. We have, we have some folks that want to snap a photo, so we're gonna take a pause. Congratulations, Wheezy. Thank you, everybody. Farida Obajami has earned the 2024-25 Mansfield Board of Ed Student Leadership Award through her hard work and determination to improve. Academics have been an important focus for Farida throughout her career at Mansfield Middle School, as she's always strives to do her best. Farida completes her homework assignments early so that she can ask her teachers questions and use the feedback to deepen her understanding. When asked what advice she would give to incoming fifth graders, she responded, "It's okay to ask for help, especially if you don't understand a lesson. It's better to ask for help than to be lost." She inspires others to do their best and overcome disappointment with grades that don't meet expectations. In Farida's words, "I've learned that if you get a bad grade, set a goal for the next grade you get, and work towards making that grade better. Giving up is never the solution." The commitment to excellence showed up on the soccer field as the Mansfield Middle School girls came close to winning it all last fall. Though the team didn't win their final match, Farida maintains it as a favorite memory from her years at MMS. She recalls, "The girls and I put our heart into the game. After the struggle and the practices we went through, we did not have many losses, but we did, when the loss did happen, we took it as a team and stayed together." Wayne United Soccer, which has been a multi-year commitment, has helped her forge those friendships with many of the same teammates from MMS. Farida rounded out her academic endeavors playing basketball and running with the track team. Outside of school, Farida's interests trend towards helping others. She has volunteered for the Covenant Soup Kitchen in Willimantic and spends Saturdays at the UConn Jump Start Doctors Academy, a 21-week college preparatory program that exposes students to careers in the healthcare field and biomedical research. Her future plans include attending Wyndham Tech High School and studying health technology. Her dream career: anesthesiologist. Mansfield Middle School's habit of character call on students to display responsibility, respect, and kindness. Farida exemplifies all three of these values on a daily basis. She is quick to keep her homeroom running smoothly and volunteers readily for tasks requested by the teacher. A loyal friend, she attracts the company of a diverse group of students contributing to a culture belonging at Mansfield Middle School. Farida, congratulations on this honor. Congratulations. Yeah, except that, yeah.
As Larry said, this is one of the best evenings that we have as Board of Education members to celebrate terrific kids, students like this, and now we move on to our retirees. As I said, it's, it's a thrill to recognize folks, it's sad to lose folks, but very appreciative for everything that you've done for our students and our kids and our families. So with that, Peter, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you all for being here and being witness to some awesome kids, but we have awesome staff members. Being an educator, being a teacher, a para educator is a calling, which means we're called to celebrate the beginning and to celebrate the closing of an amazing chapter, and I include myself in that tonight. We're going to share this year's cohort of retirees, and then pause at the end to, for those who are here, to personally give them a gift, get some pictures, and if we have any retirees who'd like to say a couple words, we would like to, at that time, invite you to the podium. And so with that, and with that celebration in your head and in your heart, I am pleased to introduce Kate McCoy, principal of Mansfield Elementary School. Kate?
Good evening, everyone. Mansfield Elementary School will be celebrating two teachers this evening, neither unfortunately can be with us. So our first is Catherine Cathy Hane. Cathy retired this December after 28 years of teaching with 18 and a half years in service to Mansfield. Most recently, she was part of our Grade Four team. She began her career at Vinton and continued at MES following our merger. Cathy was known for her consistency and her relationship with students and colleagues. Her work in upper elementary left an impact on our school community. She's currently enjoying more time with her growing family and gardening. We thank Cathy for her many years of service. The next teacher we're celebrating is Deb Bailey. Deb Bailey is retiring after 39 years with Mansfield. She spent the first 36 years at Vinton, starting in first grade and then moving to second grade, where she remained. Deb is known for her steady, kind presence, strong instructional practice, and deep commitment to her students. Her approach aligns closely with Mansfield's core belief in developing the whole child, supporting not just academic success, but student well-being and building connections with families as well. Today, Deb enjoyed a good soaking by our students at the end of Field Day as our send-off. We're grateful for her care and consistency she brought to her work, and we wish her all the best in retirement. And now I'm inviting Larry Barlow, principal of Mansfield Middle School, for his retirees.
Good evening again. Martha Davis has taught for over 33 and a half years, including 23 years, in Mansfield Public Schools. Most recently, she's been a vital part of our fifth grade team, teaching language arts, reading, and social studies. I vividly remember collaborating with her in our district-wide social studies curriculum committee. It was there where I saw her passion as a student-centered educator, willing It was there where I saw her passion as a student-centered educator, willing to take risks to the benefit of her kids. That passion for education and supporting students has always been so evident. Martha recently shared a philosophy with me that truly encapsulates her approach: Find something you love about every kid. Martha, it has been a genuine pleasure to work alongside of you this past decade or so. We will certainly miss your dedication and spirit at MMS, and we wish you a wonderful and fulfilling retirement. Thank you. Annie's not here this evening, but Annie Perkins has taught the past 23 years in Eastern Connecticut and for the last 13 years at Mansfield Middle School. Annie has ignited a love for science in countless students. Her deep passion for the subject is evident, always through the lens of ensuring that we take care of our environment and our planet. Annie truly embodies critical thinking in the five Cs in every task and lesson she designs, providing extraordinary opportunities for her students. It's not just to learn about science, but it's truly to think and breathe it and to actually be scientists. I hope your retirement, Annie, if you're listening, brings you wonderful opportunities to travel and spend cherished time with your family. Thank you, Annie, for all that you've done to inspire and support our students. And I know Annie and Doug are listening, or will be listening, to the stream at some point. And Doug Perkins is also retiring. Doug Perkins has taught for 38 years, with the last 29 years at MMS. As our math and science enrichment teacher, he has passionately supported our students, encouraging them to pursue their interests and to think critically about the issues presented to them. I've always held a deep appreciation for Doug's unique ability to ask those truly thought-provoking questions that stimulate deep thought, questions that make us realize that we may not have the answer to them immediately or even ever, but they are essential for growth. Simply put, Doug sees his role as helping all kids be their very best. We will truly miss you, Doug. It's been an absolute privilege to work alongside of you. MMS will not be the same without you. You've left a profound and lasting impression and imprint on our school community that we all will strive to live up to. We wish you all the very best in your retirement. Congratulations, Doug. Next, I'd like to share thanks to Kim Ruiz. Kim Ruiz has taught her entire 25-year teaching career in Mansfield Public Schools, and MMS was fortunate to have her, most recently serving as an interventionist teacher and coach. Kim recently shared with me how impressed she is by her colleagues' dedication and skill as educators, but she exhibits those qualities and more. When I think about the qualities of an exemplary educator, Kim embodies them all. She is kind, she's deeply student-centered, a constant collaborator, a lifelong learner, incredibly hardworking, and someone who always leads by example. In her time at MMS, she has made a powerful and lasting impression on our colleagues, students, and families that she has worked alongside. Kim, it has truly been a pleasure and an honor working with you this past school year. We wish you all the very best in your well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Kim. And I would now like to introduce Dr. Shami Patwa, Director of Student Support Services for Mansfield Public Schools.
Good evening. Karen Hanadi. Karen has been a thoughtful, dedicated member of the MMS Support Services staff for many years. Known for her sharp insight and caring nature, she could always be counted on to dive deep into a topic and craft the right supports for students. Beyond school, Karen and her family have generously raised Future Guide Dogs for Guiding Eyes for the Blind. These dogs quickly became popular visitors to MMS, and I think she's here tonight. In retirement, Karen is excited to bake her way through William Assunoma's Essentials of Baking, put her new power tools to good use, and continue her meaningful work with Guiding Eyes. Congratulations, Karen, on a well-earned and inspiring retirement. Debbie Ducheno. Debbie tested the Mansfield Waters as a part-time SLP at Goodwin Elementary School. She quickly came out of retirement and thankfully joined us full-time. Debbie is known for her tenaciousness, and I would say that even if she was here. She is a woman of many passions, and retirement will allow her more time to garden, read, vote, and spend time with her family. Make sure to say hi to her at the adventure park, because she's working there too. Okay, Deb. It is hard to think about the intensive resource room at MMS without picturing Deb as part of that space. Deb has worked with our most complex learners, helping to foster their independence and academic growth. Her commitment to others continues beyond the school day into her work at Horizons. Retirement will bring time for travel, family, and exploration. Happy trails, Deb. You're going to be missed. Jenny Fortier. To know Jenny is to know someone who gives their 110% all the time. She has worked with our most, another complex learner category, as part of the Stripes team. Jenny's positive spirit managed to charm the most reticent learners. Her ideas and creative projects benefited the Stripes community in countless ways. Jenny is looking forward to spending time with her new grandchild in Iowa. And last but not least, Carmen Rivera Garrett. Carmen began her career as a paraeducator in pre-K, so it's only fitting that she wraps up this chapter right where she started, in pre-K. Over the years, Carmen supported many students as a dedicated one-to-one paraeducator, leaving a lasting impression through her patience, compassion, and keen sense of humor. Now she's looking forward to spending time hiking with her husband Steve, staying active and healthy, and reconnecting with extended family. Wishing you all the best on this next adventure, Carmen. And now I pass this to Superintendent Morrell.
So Peter Dart. He's served for, it's weird standing this way, I need to turn it this way. He's served as not only a superintendent of school, principal, and educator for the past 38 years in public education. And we were grateful to have you here for our last seven years. So just so you have a little background about Peter, first and foremost, congratulations on 38 years of service. As I was thinking about this evening, I reflected on stories that we know, the retellings that you have shared, and the events that we, as a community, have shared with you over the last seven years. And as I thought about these memories, I also reflected on the volume of untold stories that are still held in your heart from 31 years of service not in Mansfield. I wondered, what are the unveiling stories that have shaped your thinking? What experiences have filled you with purpose and ignited your passion for the work over your very long career? For those that don't know, Peter's first job was that of an eighth-grade teacher in Colchester, where he taught math, science, and ELA as part of an interdisciplinary team. And from the beginning, and the stories that Peter shares, he embraced innovative practices, planning relevant learning experiences with colleagues that brought students outside the walls of school, finding ways to make learning authentic and relatable to his students, whether it was outdoor learning, a story about a drive home from one of those events that was stressful, or finding a tractor that a student could rebuild. Peter recognized that students needed to have purpose in their learning experience, and he always sought to ensure that relevant learning was a vital part of his classroom. Recently, one of his students', former student, shared a correspondence with him, and she said in this correspondence, "You were the teacher I always aspired to be before it was encouraged, accepted, or even recognized as good teaching. You pushed boundaries on what it meant to be a teacher, and for that, I thank you." And as his career evolved, Peter later moved on to correct Two Rivers Middle Magnet School, where he continued to spark curiosity of his learners. And it's at that time he received his O92 certification. In 2009, he joined Hartford Public Schools as the principal of Eleanor B. Cannelly School in Hartford, a pre-K through grade eight turnaround school, where he initiated systemic reforms, including early intervention for literacy, numeracy, and implemented school governance council to engage families in change. Peter's work was quickly recognized, and after a few short years, he was named principal of the new environmental science magnet school at Mary Hooker, serving over 600 pre-K through grade eight students from 45 towns. It's no surprise that, under his leadership, the Environmental Magnet School earned recognition as a Magnet School of American Education, a Magnet School of American School of Excellence. And being recognized for his keen intellect, which we all know, and savvy management skills, Peter was promoted to serve as Assistant Superintendent of Talent Management for Hartford Public Schools. And while Peter found this work rewarding, he noted that it moved him further away from the classroom and school environment. And so in 2018, he joined us at Mansfield Public Schools. We were fortunate to have him join our district as the principal of Goodwin Elementary School. Here, he was closer to the classroom and worked diligently with his team to ensure that our students had the opportunity to be curious, creative, and joyful learners. And in his time in Mansfield, he has served in many roles: colleague, mentor, strategist, logistics manager, educator, philosopher, champion of children and their families, and most of all, friend. So before I close tonight, I thought I would share something that Peter shared upon applying to one of his positions in Mansfield. I'm not even sure which one. But I believe that as you take the opportunity to view this, it'll deepen your understanding of Peter's purpose and mission as an educator over the past 38 years. "The art of teaching is the art of assisting in discovery. Warmth is the vital element for growing plant and for the soul of a child. It's not what's poured into a student that counts, but what is planted. Victory is in the classroom." Some of these quotes you'll notice sound familiar. "Leadership is practiced not so much in words as in attitude and in actions. The art of teaching is the art of assisting discovery. My heart sings when a kid refers to me as his teacher. A sense of curiosity is nature's original school of education. Education's purpose is to replace an empty mind with an open one. I go to school with youth to learn the future. A great teacher who is full of excitement and love for her students can make all the difference in their lives. The task of the modern..." I love this one. "...the task of the modern educator is not to cut down jungles, but to irrigate deserts. And who dares to teach must never cease to learn. And everyone who remembers his own education remembers teachers, not methods and techniques. The teacher is the heart of the educational system. And let us remember, one book, one pen, one child, and one teacher can change the world." So Peter, we want you to know that you have had a profound impact on those whom you've touched, and we will forever be changed. You are loved, you will be missed. Congratulations on your retirement.
And now I would like to invite the retirees up so we can, the board, give you a little remembrance gift. Come on up. Where's that other guy? Congratulations, sir. Would anybody like to speak?
Oh, a picture of Allah?
Sure.
Hi. So as you notice, I have someone with me. And what I would like to say is, Mansfield community, wholeheartedly embraced eight puppies that I have bought through this district to learn how to become future guide dogs. And as I talk to other people, other puppy raisers, you know, I hear different acceptance levels in different schools. And these puppies walked the halls, they went to assemblies, they went everywhere, and they were completely embraced. So whether you were directly involved with the pups or indirectly, I really want to thank everybody, you were a part of raising a guide dog. And not every guide dog that we have that is raised, or not every dog that is raised, becomes a guide dog. Some go on to have important jobs. We've had dogs go on to be search and rescue, detection dogs, working for ATF. And sometimes they just want to be a pet. But our dogs have gone on to be either guide dogs or other jobs. So I just want to say thank you very much. It is really just so incredible that you have done this for our community. So thank you very much, and Guiding Eyes thanks you, and Ultra thanks you a lot.
Good evening. So of course I have a paper to read. So this week, as a fifth-grade teacher, our teams went to the Benton Museum, which is here at UConn, and they gave our students an opportunity to view art, focusing on point-of-view. And this led my students to talk a lot about the idea of story and how art is interpreted by the viewer based on perspective, which is one of the tenants that we've been doing in our reading program. And it got me thinking, returning to the work I did as a Dalio recipient in 2019 and the work that I've done as a teacher. So as I lead the teaching profession here in Mansfield, I'm certainly going to miss my students' stories. In my experience, students want to be seen and heard. Recounting an important event, asking questions, comparing thoughts, means that I, like most teachers, hear our names. I want to say hundreds of times a day, but I wrote dozens, because everybody has a story to tell. And my students have provided me with many stories, some impossibly sweet, some sort of sad, and many of their stories are incredibly funny, or so they seem to think. Their stories are told in their words, in their pictures, and on their faces, and these are the tales I won't forget. I also will miss my students' perspectives on larger issues. Having taught social studies in both seventh and fifth grade, I have been greatly interested in the opinions of my students. in the opinions of my students and how they see themselves fitting into the scheme of life. Mansfield students have been given the opportunity, and I want to thank this group for that, to determine how they perceive the word "world" by being provided with primary and secondary sources in their classes in a way to see their passions turned into action. Mansfield Public Schools has been a very special place for me to grow as an educator and as an individual. Thank you for being a thoughtful, compassionate, and connected community. Goes right along with what Karen Hanady has said, "Where everyone can flourish." A huge shout out to my fifth-grade team, who encourage fellowship and provide time for children to learn about themselves and the world. And thank you to the Mansfield Board of Education and my administrative team for providing clear direction during times of challenge and of wonder. Thank you.
Well, congratulations again to all retirees. It's a sad time, but it's a happy time. Yes, sir?
I have some behalf.
Oh, please do.
Being connected nowadays, it's easy to share remarks. And Doug and Annie wish they could have been here. Their daughter just had a child in the last few days, and they're helping support their daughter and their grandchild. But here are the remarks that they asked me to share. "Doug and I are sorry that we can't be there in person, but we want to express our gratitude to the Mansfield Board of Education and the residents of Mansfield who have supported our teaching careers and provided a top-notch education to our two daughters, Sabina and Sarah. The Mansfield Board of Education's vision and financial support of the programs we have embraced over the years gave us years of professional satisfaction. Thank you for allowing us to bring 27th and 8th graders back and forth over the Atlantic to continue the legacy of the German Exchange Program. Thank you for saying yes to our Vex Robotics team when they qualified for the World Championship tournaments and wanted to travel to Dallas, Texas, and Anaheim, California. Thank you for celebrating our Science Bowl regional champions when we earned a trip to Washington, DC for the national competition. Thank you for listening to our Changemakers Club members who wanted to organize a walkout and a teach-in about the climate emergency and raise their voices at the state capitol. All those experiences took courage on your part and created transformative memories for all of our students and us. We'd also like to thank the Mansfield Middle School staff and administrators who have supported us over the years professionally and personally. You are the absolute best, and we love you. Keep up your heroic work that you do." Lastly, we'd like to thank the thousands of parents who have entrusted us with their children over the years to help them become better citizens of the world, who can successfully collaborate with their classmates and communicate their critical thinking about issues that matter to our democracy. What a privilege it's been for us to work with you, parents, and your children. We look forward to sharing our next chapter of our lives. Warmly, Annie and Doug Perkins. Thank you.
I just want to note that Kathy was going to recess to the snacks and all of that, and she's like, Peter has said too much over the years. But I'm retiring, and I get to say anything, because what are you going to do, right? I am part of all that I've met, and I just have to say the totality of 38 years has been an honor and a blessing that I hope that every educator gets to experience and just hearing your stories and having you be here to witness the tremendous work that we endeavor to do each and every day. I'm wearing the tie that my mom bought me in 1987 for the first day of school. I wear it on the first day and the last day, and I decided I wanted to wear it. I was going to say a lot, but I want to tell you that, like every teacher, I have a Rubbermaid tub, and I save everything. And I found my developing philosophy of education that I wrote when I was 19 years old. I was a freshman, and I took my first education course. I knew I wanted to be a teacher. It was in me. And I'd forgotten about this. And when I tell people just cosmically how amazing it is for me to be here in Mansfield, it leaps out on these pages when I was just a naive 19-year-old who was wearing rose-colored glasses, ready to change the world. I wrote that education should be active, the learning process that fills classrooms should not be suppressed with given answers but created questions. There shouldn't be lecturing day after day. The one-way activity disrupts learning process that reinforces discovery and application that students require and need. Students, just as teachers, should keep investigation and education alive through application and transfer. And I can't believe I use the word "transfer," because that is a word that we use here in Mansfield. I am grateful for you. I'm grateful for the Board of Education. You have blessed me and supported. We've seen great times and challenges, but I never, ever lost the sight that in Mansfield, our hearts are strong, and we all agree that kids come first. I'm going to leave you with a cautionary tale, because the world is changing rapidly. And I want you to consider what you're doing on Saturday. I want you and your voices and your families to be heard, to speak for the vulnerable, to say that we must do better. We do it in Mansfield every day. We can do it across Connecticut and across our country. We love our kids. We know what's right. And if you could give me one thing, it would be that you take some time on Saturday and find a gathering of people and show that there's hope and there's love and that we're willing to fight for what's right. Thank you.
Before we recess, I think there were some board members who wanted to make remarks. Martha?
Firstly, thank you, each retiree, for your countless contributions to our program, and we realize that our strength is a result of the dedication you have to your craft. It's been very important for our whole program and our whole school family. Thank you. And secondly, to Peter. As our new superintendent, you inherited Lyman's Orchards, four hybrid fields, more or less orderly, and beginning to bear fruit. You quickly surveyed the MPS orchard groves and envisioned how to recultivate the grids, transplanting some saplings and grafting others to produce a more robust and diverse harvest. Four groves were condensed into two, but in this case, less became more. With military precision and an eye for logistics, not a row was overlooked. For the first time, staff positions fit into an organizational chart, enabling a better understanding of the orchard's management team. From the Board of Ed's perspective, even our hybrid committee meeting schedule grew into a more productive purebred varietal. But one section, not under your purview, proved to be sort of a whack-a-mole. Our new school building presented one hidden worm after another, worm in the apple after another. In fact, you once compared it to a Lamborghini without a radio. So Peter, here, for you, is a Lamborghini without a radio. And importantly, it came in under budget. You can't remember those memories. While there is no good in goodbye and no sin in sincerely, we sincerely wish you good night and good luck.
Thanks.
I don't have the number of years on the Board of Education that Martha has, but in the short time that I've served on the Board, I have come to appreciate your leadership so much. I have worked with many superintendents in many different capacities, and you are the clear leader. I cannot tell you how much you have shaped my decisions and understanding of what it really means to be an educator, despite the fact that I have two years of service on you. I am so grateful that you decided to come to Mansfield, not only to Goodwin School, but to the Mansfield Public Schools as a whole, as our superintendent, as our leader, and as our friend. Thank you, Peter.
And now we can take a recess and go get some refreshments. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to thank you very much for joining us. We do have to get on with a board meeting. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. Very exciting. Thank you all very much for coming.
You're in nursing.
Oh, good point.
She said that question. I was wonderful.
I can't translate.
I did get an A.
Congratulations, Martha.
Our letter to the editor.
Yeah. Yep, yep. Hang on one sec. That brings us to the first opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to approach the Board? Seeing none, I will ask if there are any additions to the present agenda. Well, that brings us to committee reports. Transportation, Greg.
Alrighty, so today, we received a proposal from John Hipsher, COO of MJ Transportation, presented a five-year contract extension proposal. Highlights of the proposal include language that removes overtime charges, replacement and upgrades of cameras across the entire fleet, and a price reduction of the 25-26 school year. No decision was made at this time in regards to the proposal. The My View Bus App usage continues to be strong amongst our families. 184 new bus app accounts created this school year, August 24 to June 25. Of those 184 new accounts, 68% of these new accounts were created August through September. 32% of these new accounts were created October through June, and 468 of our current students have at least one family account associated with the student. This data indicates that this service is valued by our families, and I can personally speak to it. My grandmother watches it like a hawk every day. 25-26 routing is currently well underway. As of this date, a first draft of all routes is nearly complete. In the coming year, there are plans to reinstate Bus 11. This will help to address some of the routing challenges we face in our large rural community. As of this date, we are on target to meet all of the timelines noted within our summer routing plan.
Great, thank you very much, Greg. And that brings us to information presentations and actions. And we're going to start with Sustainable CT, application for gold.
Yep, so, good evening. I'm just queuing it up, and it would not feel like a board meeting if I didn't talk about our North Star, our mission of each and every child, and our six core beliefs that drive what we do each and every day. And we think of it through our key drivers of knowing students, supporting the whole child, and ensure deep learning. So I'm going to start this, and then Susannah is going to add a little more to it. The town and departments across the town, including Board of Ed, has been invited to participate in Sustainable Connecticut, which is a voluntary certification process. Currently, Mansfield is a silver-rated town for all of our endeavors to become more sustainable. And in a meeting that we had earlier this year, the mayor and other leaders talked about setting a goal for going for gold. And getting gold certification is important to the town because it recognizes all the things that we do to really become a sustainable community and town and to demonstrate it for others. And so, tonight, we're going to propose a resolution that really will help the town gain this gold certification. The Board of Ed actually was a pivotal member of the Sustainable Group because of the net-zero elementary school, the solar panels that we invested in the middle school, our food service practices and compost. So the town was excited that we were partnering, that we were endeavoring to do this as well. And so, Susannah, I'll ask that you talk a little bit about the benefits of this, and then we can get into the ask for tonight.
Sure, thank you. Just briefly, as Peter explained, our town staff and committees have been working incredibly diligently to meet the goal of gold certification from Sustainable CT. This goal is strongly endorsed by the Sustainability Committee, which I've had that privilege of being our school board representative for many years, and, of course, is a goal of the Town Council. And it's an incredibly high bar, and we are super close, super close. So by voting on this resolution as an elected body, we are confirming exactly what's in our district development plan already. But we are, by voting on it, we are meeting a requirement for gold certification for Sustainable CT. So we are, as Peter explained, there are many, many actions that we've taken as a board and as a school community to support gold certification, but this is one more and a box to check.
Yeah, and I would just add, the resolution, which is our first core belief, which is lead with equity, really is just an acknowledgement. It's a formality for the Board to endorse this, to get this credit, so that the town continues to gain the credits needed for gold. But I want to point out that even without the resolution, it's still the Board adopted core belief. So the resolution, with or without any action tonight, we would still continue to use our district development plan. That is still the Board's plan. And so, it seems maybe a little odd to pull just one thing out, but it really is in the context of what the town is trying to do, and we want to be good partners to the town and endeavor to get this goal. And so, I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Would you like me to?
If anyone has any questions first. Is there anything, anyone? Yes, Martha.
I don't understand the relevance of equity to sustainability.
That's a big and important question. That is, my understanding for gold certification is that we've had a lot of work to do around equity, and it's been one of the primary drivers of the work. And there's been all kinds of work done to make sure that everyone has a voice in this process in our town. And there's been so many different ways in which we've tried to engage everybody in our town to make sure that they have a voice. So that's a very brief overview, Peter. I don't know if you want to add on to.
I can, and sadly, having worked in larger districts where environmental injustices take place, an equity statement is important because very often, there are families that are vulnerable, disadvantaged, that don't have the tools to advocate, end up in degraded environments. And so, sustainability is really thinking about, how do we empower all members of our community to enjoy the benefits of a community that doesn't produce a lot of carbon emissions, that has open space, that endeavors to think about energy in a more equitable term? And when we use it, we talk about access and opportunity. And so, in sustainable worlds, equity has to be a player of that because we want to make sure that all members of the community have access and that it's for everyone. It's not just for a certain demographic of our community that benefits from sustainability.
Thank you. I guess I would just question, to me, equal opportunity, equal availability is very strong, and that's what our federal laws are based on. And especially now that there's been an executive order, and with that, I know that's not law, but it gives the Justice Department, I guess, leeway to look into changing laws or changing language. And so, I just wonder if this is going to just, you know, be out of date really soon? And if you want something to have a long life, that maybe we should think forward a little, little more. And I would like to see more relevance to equality or to what our federal laws are based on, because those were pretty remarkable in the 60s, the civil rights laws and the rights for women and so on and so forth. They were pretty, very, very strong. And they've sustained themselves after all these years. And I'm afraid that this is going to be, might not have that long life.
I think you have an excellent point. Equity is never a destination, it's a journey, because our understanding of equity evolves and changes and reflects the needs and values and norms of communities. And so, I think if you follow civil rights, it went through various phases, and the words we used to describe it and what we focused on changed. In our context as a Board of Education, we have a five-year strategic plan called our District Development Plan that has this in it. And so, it will naturally provide that opportunity for Board members under Superintendent Morrell to talk about the 2.0 of the next District Development Plan, which would be that opportunity to ask that question. What is in our District Development Plan and our core beliefs that we want to, we want to look at, we want to talk about? Tonight's resolution, though, is what we currently have. And so, I think they're two different things. And to your point, I think in due time, the Board will have conversations about the next iteration of our strategic plan and core beliefs. Maybe that will change and reflect what you're talking about. But for tonight, our ask is really just to acknowledge what we already are working on. And like I said, each and every day, we lift all those core beliefs. That's what the Board asked us to do four years ago, and so, we're still in that, in that mode.
And it very much parallels Sustainable CT goals, so that's part of this process. Edith?
So, I'm not in favor of changing this in any way, just because some, that there are some feelings at certain levels in the federal government that this should be rolled back. That is not the law now, and it is the intention of our school district. As you've said, it's part of our core beliefs, and I think we should go forward with it and not obey in advance of something actually becoming law. We'll deal with it when it happens.
Jeanette?
It's my understanding that this statement is a statement of the statewide group and a goal that the town is taking as well, and it is our present goal under our current research done. So I would feel it best to follow that guideline.
And in our role as elected officials, you know, again, we have this opportunity to support this goal of the town and the Board, or the goal of the town, the Sustainability Committee, a lot of the work that the town has done towards gold certification.
And I agree, because we have a remarkable partnership
Yes.
in this community between the town government and the school, and I think that this is another way that that comes to action.
Absolutely.
Martha?
Does this have any money behind it, which means, do we get grants or do we?
Yes, absolutely. So part of the benefits of being gold certified is that we become eligible for funding and grants, that we become a community that is lifted up and celebrated, and so, we get attention, we get people who are interested in Mansfield. This has economic benefit for people who might be interested in moving to Mansfield. It's a way of promoting who we are in the context of all the 169 towns in Connecticut, and showcasing what is different about our town than other towns, that this is a value of ours. So there's publicity, there's recognition from governmental agents, agencies, and then there are funds and grants that are, that become available for us to apply to if we're interested in them.
And we've already, I'm sorry to interrupt, we've already received an acknowledgement. I think our mayor and, Tony Moran and Lynn Stoddard, the Chair of our Sustainability Committee, were recognized for the work the town is already doing at the Mark Twain House, I believe, last week. And I also know, just to put it into context, we are so close to gold certification, there is one town who's gotten it so far, Vernon. It makes me feel competitive. I'm like, we got to, we got to get on. All right.
Just like to see a little stronger, and I just, I'm afraid that the equity part is, in the current climate, is going to fizzle out. And I just would like equality in there, because I think that has a standing legally.
So, Susannah, would you read the resolution?
I will.
Will serve as our motion.
Excuse me, I'm waving and nobody's seeing me.
Catherine?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of concerns. Number one, this thing was done in 2020 in COVID, and we have not had any update of this in our meetings, and I know it's in the, you know, we have stuff, resolutions, not resolutions, but in our mission. This makes me think about the German trip, because we, we're not equitable in the German trip, and I'm sorry to bring that up, but we're not. And then, I don't understand why this resolution puts us over the hump for gold.
I can answer the, putting us, this resolution is part of our application for gold. It's not the only thing. It's part of a broad range of actions that the town has taken and is documenting. This is just one small piece.
Well, it will pass, I'm sure, tonight, but what I would like to know is, if it didn't pass, would that totally take away our ability to attain gold?
Yes, my understanding it is.
Yeah.
And to answer your question about concerns about trips and being equitable, saying that we lead with equity means that we acknowledge the work. It doesn't mean that we are saying that we're perfect. In fact, we're far from it. We have a lot of work to do, and that's why we need you, Catherine, and every Board member to think critically about what does it mean to lead with equity? If we didn't have that core belief, you might not have the standing to say, well, wait a minute, does every child have the ability to attend that trip? And that led to many very important questions that was very impactful. It's hard to move the needle on equity. It takes conversations, it takes courage, and I'm proud that the Board of Ed has this equity statement, the town doesn't. And that's why it's so important in this particular context. This vote, again, doesn't mean that we're suddenly starting to do something. We already have these marching orders from the Board within the five-year strategic plan. And so, we know we are still working on leading with equity, and we also know there will be opportunities to revisit this plan, to get input from our community, and certainly from the Board and from our staff members. And so, I hear you loud and clear, and I don't want anyone to think that in Mansfield, we're perfect about our work with equity. We're far from it. We have endeavored to just simply do better, that we're going to hold on to that North Star as we walk together towards it.
You made the comment about the town not leading with equity. If they were leading with equity, would we would we still need to do this resolution?
I didn't say the town isn't leading with equity. I said that the town doesn't have an equity statement. We do. I think the town actually has many very positive practices that would fit under lead with equity. They just simply don't have a document that has it. We do. And so the time seems right for us to acknowledge that we have it. And I guess that that's what the resolution is, is simply just acknowledging that we have this and that we use this as a core belief.
Yeah. I also, if folks do have--
Makes no sense to me.
If folks do have questions about sustainable CT, I would really encourage you to look at the application process and the requirements for gold certification and take a peek at that when you have a chance.
Susannah, would you read the, would you read the resolution, please?
Absolutely. A resolution of the Mansfield Board of Education. Whereas, the Mansfield Board of Education embarked on a strategic planning initiative in the spring of 2020, which included multiple sessions with the members of the Board of Education and district leaders and staff using community and stakeholder feedback. Whereas, the strategic planning initiative resulted in a district development plan, a five-year strategic plan that included the adoption of six core beliefs that described the values and desires of the community for its children. Whereas, in September 23rd, 2021, the Superintendent presented the final District Development Plan, the plan, to the Board of Education. Whereas, the six core beliefs in the plan are integrated into the key drivers, actions, and indicators in the plan and plan implementation. Whereas, the first core belief in the plan is lead with equity. We believe that children must be supported to learn and develop in a safe, anti-racist environment free from discrimination, bias, and prejudice against all people, where conscious efforts and intentional actions ensure equitable opportunities. Whereas, the lead with equity core belief was developed through a process that included recognition of a need for system-wide change and the need for a more equitable path going forward, Mansfield's commitment to protecting all current and future students, families, staff, and community members, and a vision for future processes that will address past and current inequities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mansfield Board of Education hereby reconfirms its commitment to leading with equity by formally adopting the following core belief. Lead with equity. We believe that children must be supported to learn and develop in a safe, anti-racist environment free from discrimination, bias, and prejudice against all people, where conscious efforts and intentional actions ensure equitable opportunities. Adopted this fifth of, oh, wait, I don't do that part yet. Yes? Adopted this fifth of June? No, not yet. I will now move to adopt this resolution to lead with equity.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Jeanette. Any further discussion? All right.
Yes, I do. I'm just really wish that this had been brought up at a previous meeting so we could have discussed it because I feel that I'm not entering this with the knowledge I feel I need to have.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Susannah. That brings us to 2025-26 school meal prices.
Chef Mariah unfortunately couldn't be here. She is attending graduation for a family member at E.O. Smith. However, our Finance Director, Amanda Backus, is here and will talk you through a proposed student meal price increase. Chef Mariah has proposed, and both Amanda and I have reviewed it, and it feels sound and whole. You know that we've been paying attention to the, the food service budget and negative balances for student lunches. We also understand that laws and guidelines require us to close the gap between federal free reimbursement and our own rates. And so the 50 cent increase for lunches, I'll call you to this chart down here. So our federal reimbursement for lunch is $4.43. That's what the government gives us for a student who has a free meal. A student who can afford and doesn't meet the requirements for that only pays at the elementary school $3.50, at the middle school $3.25, and at E.O. Smith, $3.50. So you see that actually the government is paying more and subsidizing the cost of our meals for the people who can afford them. And so by law, we need to close that gap. And we need to do it over time and, and not in one particular increase. A 50 cent increase for lunches would generate about $50,000 in revenue. And just to show you how that might help the food service balance, right now, we're projecting an end-of-year negative balance of $80,000. So that $50,000 really would be a very significant closure in that gap. Chef Mariah is working with our Director of Talent Management and HR and Amanda to look at staffing plans, schedules. So she feels confident that she's going to be able to be in the, the black, so to speak, with this meal price increase along with some changes and adjustments in her scheduling and staffing plan. We know that just overall, what's adding to the, the increase or that debt, so to speak, is the increased cost of salaries and benefits, just food procurement, professional learning, equipment, and that student debt. And unfortunately, I don't know if you followed state legislature, but they did not pass any act that would extend any relief for student meals. Just in, in context, you know that Chef Mariah feels very strongly that students are never denied a meal, no sad lunches, and that we continue to promote a very easy way to apply for free and reduced meals and that we have a care team model that includes our Director of Student Support Service, Dr. Patwa, who meets regularly and, and looks at any family that might be in this situation. And so we're very gentle and we try to work with families to make sure that they're accessing any support that they might be eligible for. And then just as context, we have 22% of our Mansfield Public School students who are eligible for free and reduced. And E.O. Smith has about 18%. And Amanda, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
No. Well, I'll just, I'll just echo what you said. Between changes in salaries, the additional $50,000 in revenue that we're proposing and that student debt, we would easily be well in excess of that $80,000 that we're seeing this year. So we really feel that this increase would put us at a better place operationally.
No, I, that's fine. And you also have a $50,000 reserve.
That's correct.
If there's a dire need.
Yes, yep.
So, you know, that's helpful. And I'm delighted that our chef has made, you know, all lunch, everybody eats.
Yep.
And it isn't the proverbial, oh, you get a tuna, you get a peanut butter and jelly sandwich.
Right, no, that doesn't--
Get crackers and water or something like that. No, I, you know, that kind of stigma, we don't need.
Yeah, yeah. And, and again, it makes our district very unique that we stand firm and believe that. And through your generosity and the Finance Committee, we continue to support building that reserve balance. I learned loud and clear when I traveled with Chef Mariah with her fellowship and heard from superintendents across the country and legislators that food service programs are not designed to make money. That is not at all what they're designed to do. They're designed to feed kids. And it's a crime that we've made some states and some organizations feel like they have to make money. And so that's a reality. But we think that this modest increase will really be a significant help for the Food Service Department.
Susannah?
I just have a random question. I know that there's a way that folks can donate to balance. And I wonder if, I don't know whether we put that in the minutes or we could, I would just love to have that information again in front of us, all of us, so that that's, and it might be on the website. I just feel like it'd be great to highlight that as, as a way that folks can donate to the school system. Thank you. And also, this is great. I'm fully supportive since I'm talking.
Martha?
Does E.O. Smith have to agree to this price increase as well?
We have historically not had E.O. Smith agree to any price increase. We just--
Sorry, what did you say?
We have not historically had E.O. Smith agree on any price increase. We set the rates and they are subject to the rates that we set.
Okay, so there hasn't been any discussion, any, no queries?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All right, Jeanette? Could you make a motion, please?
I move that we increase the Mansfield Food Service lunch prices by 50 cents per meal, resulting in 2025-26 prices as follows. Elementary lunch, $3.50. Middle school lunch, $3.75. High school lunch, $4.
Do I have a second? Greg? Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? I didn't get that. Catherine, could you tell me was in favor? I think.
In favor.
Okay, thank you. That's unanimous, Jill. Thank you very much, everyone. That brings us to Operations Manager.
Going to ask Amanda to stay there and invite Superintendent-elect Candace Morel to come up and talk about Operations Manager. And I'm just going to say a couple of words and then turn it over to Candace. But as, as we've been working on a transition plan and a succession plan between administrations, Candace and I both did a needs assessment with our eyes attuned to the Director of Teaching and Learning. That's the big question as Candace takes on a new role. But it is within the context of a conversation that frankly, we've had with the Board during our budget season that we need to right-size the district, that we are facing declining enrollment. And maybe this is an opportunity, as we look at needs, to think differently about the structure of central office and the supports for Candace and her administration. And so with that, I will turn it over to Candace.
Thanks, Peter. As Peter said, we've been engaged in conversations over the, the last month or so and really thinking through what are the needs that we have? And is, is it time that we rethink the landscape of the, the position of teaching and learning and reflect on what are the, the jobs, the tasks, the things that we must do in the flow of work? And is there an opportunity to reimagine a structure that better serves the needs that we presently have? But also allows us and offers us some opportunity to leverage expertise that'll help us to do our work while also considering potentially some cost savings. And so as we've begun to reflect on the tasks and workflow, we're recognizing that this is an opportunity to redraft a description based on our growing and evolving needs in central office. And through some discussions, we've really been thinking about the types of work that we would benefit from. And we've begun to think about aligning this position to that of a business and operations manager that would fall under the Connecticut State Department of Education 085 certification. This allows us to continue to attend to important work that we must attend to. It also allows us to pay, play to people's strengths. And I'll be very transparent. I've always deeply valued the work of teaching and learning. I've put a lot of effort, thought, and time and energy into the work that we've grown in this district. And I'm not ready to let it go yet. I think that's one of the evolving elements is that we have good systems moving forward. We're, we're making good traction with the things that we're doing. And I'd very much like to be a part of that. But recognizing that, we also have to be mindful of what are the other needs that exist? And how do we leverage expertise to help us do our best work and be efficient about it? And so we've been thinking about this position would need an 085 certification and a minimum of a bachelor's degree, but certainly could be looking at someone with a master's degree. We know that this position currently, that the teaching and learning position is funded in the 25-26 school year. And if we were to redraft the job description, it would net us a pretty significant savings and allows us to better align our work to our system coherence model. We really see that the strength of someone with accounting and reporting expertise that could help stay on top of data processing, our grant applications and reporting, and support us with transportation would be a benefit. Additionally, it allows us in this role, it allows the Operations Manager to ensure that we continue to maintain operational excellence and fiscal prudence by creating and refining and implementing practices, policies, and flows of work that align to our values and helps us to continue to maintain a district of excellence.
So just to add, thank you, Candace. I, I think this is a smart move. It will net a significant savings and will provide the, the, the human capital to support Candace and her leadership that would have a bandwidth to support the grants. Chasing after grants and managing them takes a lot of time. And the Board will remember that Candace, under her role as Director of Teaching and Learning, secured several key grants for the science of reading, high dosage tutoring, and managed a huge portion of the ARPESR grant funding. Without the support of another person, it, it's going to be incredibly difficult. But if we look at the business side of our district work, it will free up Candace from the operations side to continue the, her North Star work in the teaching and learning world. So I think it's a win-win. It's already in our budget. And it really would just require redrafting the job description from Director of Teaching and Learning to an Operations Manager.
Any questions? Jeanette?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say what really common sense, this follows. I've worked in other districts where there is a person dedicated to that kind of financial support. And given your role over the last few years and the expertise that allowed you to come take this position, this seems like a very good use of our resources.
Anyone else? May I just ask, just out of curiosity, what's an 085 certification?
Oh, that's a great question. It is actually, it's a, it's a business manager certification that's offered by the State Department of Education. And what that says is it really requires the person receiving that certification to have a strong business background, an accounting background that's solely focused on school and schools and how schools operate. So a person coming with that certification would understand the operations of a school. They would understand and have experience with things like contract procurement, transportation, food services, how to help with human resources and negotiations of collective bargaining. So they would bring, as well as data processing and a variety of other things. But what they would bring is a wealth of experience that would help to strengthen our operational system.
I'm just guessing this would, you, they would work very closely with you, Amanda. Yes.
Yeah, and I, I'm glad, if I could just add, we're so grateful for Amanda's leadership and the Finance Department, but they're shared. And so, you know, when we breathe a sigh of relief when our budget is over, she still has two more entities to do, E.O. Smith and the town. And as we see right now, it's just the never-ending project. And so this would complement what I see as being a conduit into the finance world for part of the work, but recognizes it's the overlap of all these business kind of entities from transportation, even communications, would overlap these things and support the leaders that we already have in place, but free them up so that we have this person taking care of some of the nuts and bolts.
Susannah?
And I'm excited and hopeful that like the person, or whoever you hire in this position, I'm really supportive of it, is also has some grant experience. As we know, that grant landscape is changing really dramatically and rapidly by the minute. And so I think having somebody with some know-how around that work-- having somebody with some know-how around that work, it's complex, as you know, anyway, and then things are changing so quickly. So it, it will be wonderful to have somebody with some experience in that area as well.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you for pointing that out because we agree, uh, grants not only procure but, but management and staying on top of them. It's big work. Um, and having someone that can, can do that work, can procure, set things up, would really help us and help finance because in fairness, they do a lot of the behind-the-scenes with the grants.
Martha?
Uh, the last bullet would report to Superintendent and District Management. Um, so for, say, for instance, for a yearly review, who would be giving the review of their performance? Um, would it be just the Superintendent, or is this a team, District Manager? I understand exactly the-
Sure, that's, that's a fair question. Uh, you know, in my view, the Superintendent would give the report, but in all of this work that we do, we're also seeking feedback from others that are working closely with this position. Um, and so it, it, some of this position would be working closely with our Finance Department. And so there's feedback that would also be a part of that evaluation.
Any other questions or comments? I just remember Kelly years ago talking about the need for a business manager, and it just seems like we've come to where we should be now. This makes perfect sense to me. Okay, thank you. All right, um, no, no, no. We don't have any new business? Yes, Catherine?
Um, how does hiring a business manager fit in with our shared way of doing things in Mansfield? Cause I kinda thought Amanda was our business manager.
No, Amanda's our Director of Finance.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so-
I do have the 085 certification for school management as well. Um, again, as, as I'm a shared resource, there are things that I cannot spend as much time doing. For instance, the grants. We reconcile the grants. We process your payments for your grants, but at the end of the day, I don't know what was supposed to be charged to the grant or not. This position would be more involved on the day-to-day side of the Board of Ed operations to ensure that what we're processing and financing aligns with the expectations of the district leadership. So I do see us working very closely with this position. I also think this position would handle things such as food services and transportation, which is not a shared service right now. That is something that Candace and Mariah have been handling entirely on their own.
So who's the district management?
District management really is the district leadership team. So it's, it's whomever Candace has in her cabinet, uh, and district leadership circle. Um, I, I would define it as, uh, IT facilities, uh, communications, HR. Um, but Candace will, will define what that team is and, and what that cabinet will be.
So they would report to the Superintendent and all these other en- folks?
Yes, and work with. Because if we're thinking about, for example, the example of IT, um, there's a, a heavy dose of purchasing and procurement. Uh, there's work that we need to do to make sure we're aligning our budgets and on top of that work. And so, uh, they would be at times assisting those other district management level personnel to make sure that they're on top of the things that they need to be on top of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Martha?
One last fast question here. So, uh, I've read the vendor list before, and sometimes I've noticed that, um, some items don't have a cost center after them. Some have R19, some have Eastern Highlands Health, some don't. And so I think this person might be able to enable items to be attributed to the right cost center, which would really help in budgeting.
Uh, and if I could add to that, there is a section called District Management, and I would see that this position, position aligns well with the District Management section of our budget and cost center.
All right. Thank you very much, Amanda, Candace. That brings us to a second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to approach the board? Seeing none, I'll take any suggestions for future agenda items? And Jill?
Can that be repeated? I did not hear it.
Any suggestions for future agenda items? I'm sorry? Yes. The Board recognizes the retirement of Kim Ruiz, instructional coach at MMS effective July 1, 2025, and the resignation of William Bergen, MMS teacher, effective June 17th, 2025. Now I will take a motion to adjourn.
Kathy, can I just, since I was trying to get on and I missed the, um, the, um, the approval of the minutes? The, 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 what you read last week wasn't in the minutes regarding Candace.
Um, do you have a specific that was supposed to be put in there?
Well, yeah, cause it was read during a Board of Ed meeting, so that's supposed to be in the, um, in the minutes.
Okay. We will definitely take a look at that. So it was the last meeting, Jill?
Thank you.
All right, motion to adjourn? Thank you, Greg, second? Thank you, Edith. All in favor? We are adjourned at 8:14. Thank you, everyone.
Peter, your last board meeting. Congratulations.